How are you doing?
Welcome to the council meeting of January the 28th, 2020. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. That council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of January 28th, 2020 as presented.
One slight change on the agenda. Item four, petitions and delegations. The S P, can't read, S P C A will not be appearing tonight. Had to cancel. All in favor? Passed. Declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations. Welcome Jose Merrick, Dan Richard. And a very familiar face at my house around suppertime, my sister Bart.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jose Merrick. I'm retired, close to three years now, from the addiction field, where I worked for 16 years. My main area of function in my career became treatment that centered around people who suffered from opioid addiction. I became involved in all aspects and layers of treatment for this population group. The last year has been very difficult for me, as I was contacted by many old clients, patients, their families, some concerned parents, and other community partners regarding what was happening in our community. I very much got a sense that people were feeling a loss of hope from all sides. I was seeing obituaries in the paper and comments on social media that literally at times brought me to tears. I could see that hope amongst our service providers and community partners and members was unraveling. Loss of hope and feeling of isolation within this subject is dangerous. I know that when we feel hopeless, it is our nature to look for someone to blame. I know this, and this is what I wanted to prevent, and this is why I'm here today. I would like to help develop a community action plan, a comprehensive mental health and substance abuse strategy with a focus on opioids. This plan includes the development of an opioid poisoning overdose prevention task force. My purpose today is to mobilize communication between town council, service providers, community members, and partners regarding opioid use, poisonings, and deaths in our community. Our goal is to reduce the amount of opioid poisonings and deaths across all areas, to identify and address strengths and barriers, in accessing treatments, supports, and harm reduction regarding opioids, to implement a preventative awareness campaign for the youth and the general public regarding opioids. We held our first meeting yesterday to explore if members and partners were interested in pursuing such goals. The meeting proved to be very fruitful in information sharing. Seventeen people from different areas of expertise, survivors, and community members presented. It was indicated that they were, in fact, interested in pursuing this endeavor. My request to town council is for the support of Phase One and Part One of Phase Two, and the development and implementation of a community action plan, a comprehensive mental health and substance use strategy with a focus on opioids. This includes the development of an opioid poisoning overdose prevention task force. The plan, the plan, the development would be, the plan is for the development to be an opt-in collaborative network strategy. Thank you.
Counselor Ivanoff?
I certainly support your endeavors. I can't, I mean, I've got a lot of friends who are people that I know that have died through, through the abuse of opioids, and now with this fentanyl and purple fentanyl and all those things happening in our community, it's scary. I, I find that there's more and more policing and less and less mental health treatment in our community. And, you know, I see them on a daily basis where these young people or even middle-aged and older people that are, that require mental health treatment are simply put into Montith or into a jail somewhere, and that seems to be the, the form of treatment they think works well. I know the police don't want to do it, but I mean, that's what options do they have when somebody can't be controlled in any other way, and they get to jail, and guess who they know? Get a lot more people that have the same problems as them, and that becomes their, their peer group. So I don't know, I mean, that's one hell of an endeavor that you have. I'm glad that you're willing to, to work at it because it's huge in our community.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. Counselor Owen and myself did attend that meeting I thought was very informative. Sure learned a lot more than, than I thought I knew about what the problem was. The quality of the people and, and people who have suffered in the past from addiction certainly hit home. And one of the things that the town is mandated from the province, all municipalities, by January 2021 is to come up with what is called a community safety and wellness program. So this ties right in with, with that program. So whatever the group ends up doing, we want to integrate that into, to our program as well. So I think we, from a council standpoint, I think I can speak on behalf of our council that, as Eugene just said, we certainly support whatever we can do. I know you're not looking for financial support, but general support along the way, if there's anything we can do, will certainly be there. We do appreciate especially this, not just yourself, but the other 16 volunteers that showed up, showed interest, because there was a lot of professional people involved in the medical health aspect of it, and we need their guidance and, and support as well. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, Jose and I have worked together in the past, me on an informal basis, trying to get people the help they needed. And one thing about dealing with people with addictions is, when they ask for help, the help has to be available right then, right at that moment, because 10 minutes from then, they're probably out feeding their addiction again. And we do have a number of, of services in town, but it's extremely difficult, and I know from my own experience, when I first sobered up, it was extremely difficult for me to navigate those supports that are in the community. I was fortunate in that I had a friend that was a, a social worker, and so I, I had an advantage, but even then it was difficult. And right now, I know I've lost a number of people that I've known over the last 11 years, either through alcohol or opioids. And as you can see, Jose's emotional, and it, it is an emotional topic for me as well. One of the really hard things about working with people with addictions is that your success rate is extremely low. And, you know, you can help a person, and help them, and help them, and help them, and then the addiction takes over again, and it can be extremely frustrating and hard on the people that are working with them. It's also what, what's often, I think, forgotten is that it's extremely hard on families. We have a family member here today, and I, I certainly admire that he's taking up the cause, but it's extremely hard on families and friends. And it's, and it's not hard just when the person passes. It's a hard life for the family and friends when the person is using too. And so I'd like to see the town develop an alcohol policy, which we currently don't have, and, and an opioid strategy from within, from within our own structures, so that we make it part of town policy, because we can, we can, even if we help one person, save one life, that's one more productive person that we have in the town, and one, one more family we saved. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing those personal views, and I know Dan, yourself, at that meeting yesterday was, was heartbreaking to hear, but we needed to hear that, how serious the problem is, and I appreciate your family coming out and voicing their opinion and offering to be involved, so, or condolences to your family as well.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay. You will have our support, I think that's unanimous, so keep in touch, and we will be, we will be looking for probably some input as well, so it's a two-way street when we do set up our community wellness and safety program, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for, thank you for taking on the challenge.
And just an aside, our next meeting is Monday, February 10th, at 2:30 at 109 Burnside. That's the new indigenous health center, and just behind French's funeral home, so it, people are welcome to, to join us.
And it's at 2:30?
At 2:30 in the afternoon, yep.
Thank you. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
I have a motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. That council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held, held January 14th, 2020. Minutes of the special meeting of council held January 13th, 2020, and the museum advisory committee minutes held December 18th, 2020.
All in favor? Passed. Reports of municipal officers and communications? Manager Planning and Land Development, Ashley Billado?
So for the first reports that I have today, this is actually a follow-up to a previous council meeting. We came forward on November 5th and brought a report to council for consideration to discuss relocation of the physical services office, the garage and fire hall to Archer Drive. From what I could gather around the table, they were favorable to finding a new spot for these facilities, but there were some concerns related to the preferred location, and it was as a result of it being on Archer Drive, which is on prime developable land. So what I did was I put together a, a map, just to identify that there are lots that are available to purchase, and that could be further developed, to show council that there is a substantial amount of land available in that area, should there be developers that come forward, some of which are easier to service right now than others, but we could make this a plan to move forward and work towards this in the long term, to be able to accommodate further industrial activity to take place. So with that, what I am looking for council is to proceed with our, our recommendation dedicating the identified piece of land on Archer Drive towards the construction of a new facility for physical services offices, the garage and the fire hall, so you can kind of see it highlighted on the green of the three block buildings that are on there. One's the fire hall, one's the physical services office and garage, and then the salt container, and then you have the gray shaded areas, the storage areas, about 20 acres of land there, and there's also a snow dump to the south of it. That would be the preferred location for the, for the snow dump. The other thing that I wanted to try and talk to council about was whether they were comfortable with us proceeding with preparing and posting a request for proposal for services associated with the preliminary design and cost estimates at this proposed, preferred sites. Right now, we don't really have a ballpark figure to give you of what that would look like, and that's why we want to go up to that RFP process and try and get some numbers narrowed down. From a budgetary perspective, we did have $75,000 in 2019 that we were hoping to carry over and continue to use towards the garage relocation. It will show up as a capital item in your 2020, our 2020 budget deliberations. Other questions?
Ashley, just to clarify interruptions and discussions, that 20-acre parcel, oh, okay, I just picked up on it, will accommodate for future development in, in, on Archer Drive?
Yeah, but there's, yeah, there's plenty of land that's to the west of that and across the street from where we are proposing that could allow for future development.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just, I want to acknowledge that we did receive a communication from a resident who was concerned about the new location, that it was further from the hospital, and I just want to say, yeah, those are good points, but if you're looking at fire risk, an industrial park is probably a higher fire risk than a hospital, and this would put the fire department right in industrial park. And while it will be further away from some people's houses, including my own, it will be closer to others. It's centrally located in terms of going to Swastika, it will improve our, our coverage of Swastika. It's not going to result in a major delay in any of the calls to any place in the Kirkland Lake town site. You know, it's only a matter of a few minutes. The other thing that, that makes this site a, a good choice is that there's an entrance from either end of Archer Drive, which means if for some reason the one end is blocked off due to some other emergency, the fire department can still respond through the other entrance, and that's an important consideration when you're planning fire safety things. And I know I raised concerns initially about using industrial land for what I consider a non-industrial use, but with this new plan, which could be developed over a number of years, that certainly answers that question that I had, and so I have no reservations about locating there. I think it, you know, we're not going to find a 20-acre site plus a snow dump site any other place in town, that's another factor. We're not going to get a piece of land that big, and initially I didn't realize how much property we needed. So I think it's, it's a good way to go, and combining the buildings will reduce costs for the fire department, because your garage is going to be right there, you're, you're going to be able to wash your equipment right there. It, it certainly makes sense in the long run in terms of save, of lowering the overhead of the fire department, so I think it's a good choice.
I just want to add something to Ashley's proposal. The other thing to consider, as you can see, our, our solar farms are right there, close to the, to that industrial park. So the question is, down the road, we have a 20-year contract for, for this solar farm, so what do you do after? So actually, we, we're very well positioned that we could use that power to even supply our own buildings, or maybe some other buildings with, with that power, because once we finish and we're, if we're, we decide to go off the grid, there's something else you could do with that power, is maybe regenerate that power to supply our own buildings and reduce our electricity costs. So, so those, those are, it's another point that we didn't think of at, at the point, at that time, but I think maybe looking a bit further is that maybe we can do something with that energy to supply our own energy for our buildings at the time.
Yeah, I have to agree, Eve, because it's such close proximity that it wouldn't be a big expense to, to work into. Counselor Adams?
Have we done like a point-in-time evaluation of call times from that new location to say like Swastika or to the hospital?
I'd have to have Rob comment, comment on that. Rob, do you, do you have any comments?
I don't have that, but I can get you those times.
Thank you.
Could you clarify what you're looking for?
So a point-in-time evaluation of what to do in my rescue is you, you start an emergency, and how long does it take it to get from response time from where you're going, from where you are to where you're going, right? So if the guideline that I saw available is like a response time within four to six minutes?
It's nine minutes.
Nine minutes, right? Are we within that guidelines of having a station there and being able to reach it within those guidelines?
Through, throughout the municipality.
Yes.
Wherever it is.
So if we're going to pick that location, we should make sure that?
Yeah.
Sure.
It would seem reasonable that you could get from Archer Drive to the other end of town within nine minutes, but might have to take the back way, but.
Yeah.
So where do you want to go from here, Ashley?
Well, we can defer this decision to next council and get Rob to confirm that the nine-minute rule applies to the rest of town and go from there. Is that fair?
Quite great. Counselor Ivanoff?
I'm, I'm thinking that if we're looking at other options, we should have other sites, and I don't think there's another site in Kirkland Lake that would be suitable. I mean, if we're, we can, we can delay this for another two weeks. I'm not saying we can't, but I'm just saying, if you need 20 acres of property, I'm not saying you have to tear down one of the schools, I would think. And that's, so I don't think, I mean, I just don't see the purpose in waiting two weeks to find out the week, that it's going to take you nine and a half minutes to get to the hospital, and, because you still can't build it elsewhere.
Casey? Do we even meet the nine minutes right now for Swastika? I'd like.
To my knowledge, it's never been timed before. It's nine minutes, 90% of the time.
Okay.
So you are allowed not to meet it 10% of the time.
Okay, so it would be, so it would be beneficial by moving it more centrally located, you can reach further.
You're definitely going to be quicker to get to Swastika.
Swastika, yeah. It's improving for Swastika, but not necessarily for if you live on far end of federal type of.
But like realistically, you can get anywhere in town in nine minutes.
Yeah.
So are you coming back to council?
Is there a resolution, or?
Yeah, we have council.
Yeah, next week.
Okay, I'll bring you back next week.
The ISIP? What's the motion there now? Okay, please.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen, that council defer the construction of a new physical services office slash garage and fire hall facility until the February 4th meeting.
Okay. All in favor? Passed. Thank you.
So the next report that I have for you is just a, for your information purposes. We promised that we'd come back with the final numbers for the ISIP application, just to give you a heads up on what, what those numbers ended up being. We only had an estimate when we had presented it back in December. So just to refresh your memory, the ISIP funding program is, it's a green stream infrastructure funding. It was to be used for either water sewer treatment, pipes to the ground, those type of projects. We had recommended we put the money towards the SCADA system and water treatment plant efficiencies, so energy efficiencies and, I guess, heating and electric upgrades. So there's a breakdown in the options and discussions of the items that we did add to the application, so heating upgrades, including gas conversion, lighting and electricity upgrades, including fans, the centrifugal blower, the SCADA system, the dehumidifier, and obviously some project management engineering consulting fees that will go on top of that. We did allocate a 15% contingency in the application, so the total number with the 15% contingency was 1.2, approximately 1.2 mil. The town share that we are going to be directly responsible for over a period of two years is 332,514.55 cents if we are approved. I would like to kind of go back to my budget implications. I did want to make a note that with SCADA, the recommendation, or sorry, the, the conversation that we had regarding SCADA back in the 2019 budget was we were going to have approximately $489,000 worth of costs associated with that. That was over a two-year, that was a two-year project. We had $101,000 budgeted for 2019 with $300,000 anticipated in 2020. When you look at the combination of that, based on what we were actually going to get with this application, if we're approved, it's less, so that's, that's a good news story. SCADA was supposed to be fully funded by the taxpayers or by the ratepayers. This gives us an opportunity to put it in as a, as a 30, or 26% share, I believe. So it's, you're getting more bang for your buck. The return on investment for the ratepayers is better if we, especially if it gets approved.
And also, just to add to Ashley's comments, is we have to look at the energy save, so actually that 332,000, you, you should, that should almost pay for itself within seven, eight years, because you're going to be reducing your heating costs, because now we're, we're transferring all our electrical heating to gas fired, and we're changing all our light fixtures to high-efficiency light fixtures, and the centrifugal blower, which is past its, its life, and we have no spares. Of course, we'll be running with more energy-efficient mortars and BFDs, so, so, so we all, we'll, you'll see savings in your energy costs on day-to-day basis on top of that. So it's all about energy in this project.
Counselor Owen?
Okay, this, just for my own clarification, now we've listed different items, heating, lighting, would these each go out on a separate RFP, or does the whole job go out as one job?
We would hire, it's very technical nature, this project. We hire a consultant to, to draft up all the tender package. There's a possibility that the SCADA might be a separate item, but we have to be very careful when we do that. We have more than one contractor working on site at the same time, and there are different contracts, we become the general contractor, which we don't want to, because a lot of times we, we increase our risk. So, so that's the disadvantage of going individual contracts. If your contractor's not going to be there at the same time, that's a different story, but I think this, all this work should be work in conjunction, because to do your SCADA, you need, you need electricians, so to run all the, the wiring and to do the connections, so, and there's a lot of electricity, and this project is fairly long, because it's quite extensive, because it's throughout the whole plant. So, so this will be a one, one contract, and just to make sure that we don't become the general contractor.
Okay. In terms of SCADA, when this came to council before, there was quite a long discussion. There's two different systems, one that seems to be the choice of industry today, and the other one is the system that we are currently using, the, I don't, operating system? I, I don't know the term.
Yeah, there's different operating systems, yeah.
So are we going to have a say on?
We actually have a say, because we, we work with the consultant on, on this, and we decide on different, we'll be talking to different proponents, because we have already been approached by a couple already.
Yeah, okay.
So meanwhile, while this is happening. So meanwhile, while this is happening, the design is happening, we'll be discussing the different advantage, disadvantage of different systems. And we want to make sure that this is for a long time and make sure that we have a proper system in place.
Okay, thanks, Eve.
Yeah, just to add to Counselor Owen's comments, because at that time, there was there was two different systems that not both made, manufactured by SCADA. It was another company involved. I know Counselor Perrier has been involved in the, the operating systems, which is a SCADA system at, at the mine where he works. And, but at that time, I think Aqua was recommending the, the more expensive Cadillac version over the SCADA system. So I think we need further discussion as, as you mentioned. We did have some concerns about going the expensive system that, for the bang for the buck, that it just wasn't there. So we do need that consultant.
Oh, for sure. It is very important to select the right one because it has to communicate properly so that we are able to, right now, the old system, while you cannot really run the plant, you almost have to be, have physical people go into the plant because it's very limited. So the new system in place now, you're able to operate entire system from a phone or a laptop. So, so that's, that's how, how things are done. Things are evolved quite a bit, but don't forget that on your SCADA quotation that you had before, you also had some modulating valves, some new flow meters in there, which were part of the SCADA system, which will be done. So, so really, it wasn't fair to just say, well, that's a very expensive system, yes, but maybe a hundred thousand of that, at least, was into new control valves, actuated, actuated valves and new flow meters and things like that, which were, you need to be able to control the plant. So it's part, you can't do the SCADA without doing them. So, and that, that part is done.
When do we expect to go with the, get the consultant involved at that point?
We're now, we submitted our application, so we have to wait for an answer. But we'll definitely have to go because we cannot, we couldn't spend any money before because then it's not eligible. So as soon as we, we hear an answer, right now, we're going to be working on an RFP for a consultant because that, that can go ahead. And then once we get to go ahead, then we'll be able to go. So, so the preparation of the RFP, we'll do that internally. And we'll make sure that we're ready to go when we get the answer. This, this project will be over a year, a year and a half probably. It's a long project.
That's it? No further comments? Go ahead then. Ashley, is there another, or are you finished?
I'm, I'm done with that one. I can go on to the next one.
Go on, Bill 151.
Yep. So I'm going to call Jenna up, my expert with recycling, and I'm not going to try and pretend I know what I'm talking about when it comes to this one, so.
Has Bill 151 actually been passed?
Yes.
Been the longest bill in history.
Okay, I'm just going to pull up a presentation. It's virtually the report, just kind of short form, get it done quick. All right. So I'm just going to start with a bit of background. So we started out with the Waste Diversion Act 2002. That's what established our Waste Diversion Ontario and they're the organization that helped develop, implement and operate the different waste diversion programs, such as our Blue Box, the Electronics Hazardous Waste and Tires. They're where we get our funding from. So it's supposed to be a 50% model where whatever we pay for Blue Box, we're supposed to get about 50% back. That's not very typical. Municipalities do receive the funding and it's supposed to be based on the delivery. But there's always been delays and changes to the way that they put the funding formulas together and changes to the designated material types. So moving forward, they started out with the Waste Reduction Act 2013. It was introduced, it wasn't passed because of a provincial election. But then came the Waste Free Ontario Act 2016, and this replaced the Waste Diversion Act. The act is comprised of two parts. There's the Waste Diversion Transition Act and the Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act. So the intent is to shift from a linear economy to a circular economy. And this act is supposed to establish the producers' responsibility, being that they're accountable for recovering and diverting the materials from the landfill. So the act also is replacing Waste Diversion Ontario with the Resource Productivity and Recovery Authority. So that's who we deal with now. There has been a couple of reports that have been put out. In 2016, that new legislation was proclaimed. The authority began informing the industry funding organizations to submit their wind-up plans. And this Municipal 3R Collaborative was created. So it consists of Municipal Waste Association, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, or AMO, the City of Toronto, and the Regional Public Works Commissioners of Ontario. And what they're doing is actually helping develop and promote the policies and programs on behalf of the municipalities and help support the transition to the circular economy. So, um, over the last year, we've seen the most progress with the actual Blue Box transition. So they hired a senior advisor to put together a report and he provided recommendations. So the recommendations, this is very highlighted, a six-year transition to produce, to full producer responsibility with all the municipalities transitioned by December 31st, 2025. Blue Boxes are to be transitioned over a three-year period. They want to ensure common collection systems, the transitioning municipal assets, so providing flexibility to producers related to current assets and allowing municipalities to bid, having a standardized list of materials, determining the eligible sources for Blue Box materials. So they want to maintain the existing service levels. There will be no expansions to industrial, commercial, institutional, but it's supposed to include multi-residential and public spaces. Setting effective target rates for the producers, promoting increased diversion from landfill and province-wide coordinated promotion and education. Shortly after that, the minister from the MOECP agreed to this. They announced that this Blue Box program will be transitioned to full producer responsibility based on those recommendations. And they provided direction to Stewardship Ontario to submit a wind-up plan for the Blue Box. And the consultation for this has, has been completed. So we're there for that. At the end of December, we had a call for action to pass a resolution from the AMO president. So what they're looking for from the municipalities to pass a resolution as to whether we want to continue providing those recycling Blue Box collection services and what our preferred transition date is. So I'm not going to ask you guys to pick that date today. I want you to know about it. So there are some programs that have transitioned already. So the tires program, they transitioned effective January 1st, 2019. There was no changes to the operations at our landfill site. It was a very minimal amount of money that we actually got for the tire program and they had some very strict rules on how to, how to deal with that. So we are still operating, having tires collected. We're just not seeing that $700 a year. The next one to go is the single-use batteries and then the electronics and electrical equipment and material for municipal household hazardous and special waste. So those are all coming. So in terms of what we have now, we do offer the recycling program. As per our regulations, we have to offer something. So we do a curbside pickup with the carts. Our contract with GFL was for a five-year contract with options for one or two-year extensions. So our approximate cost for recycling services for the 2019 year was 193,761. And that included collecting and transporting, transporting the materials to a facility. And our funding that we received from Stewardship Ontario was in around 65,000. So not half. So what the big thing that I'm getting from all the conversations we've had is there's not supposed to be any negative effects on the collection system. Now, you're not supposed to have any interruptions. They will continue to collect, whether it be we, we take on that role in the cost for it or if we push it to the producers. There's still a lot of unknowns and questions that I probably can't answer, but I'm more than happy to try. So that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Well, it's certainly nice to see that it's finally moving ahead. Was there anything, any talk about the ban of the, like say, plastic bottles for water?
It was addressed in one of the reports, but it's not something that they're pushing down the line rate at the moment, but it is something that they're, they're keeping on.
Okay, so it's not included as part of this bill?
It might be, but effective or any effects for the municipality, I don't think it really does at this point.
Any further comments? Questions?
So I will need to come back to, to have a resolution passed. So our report is asking if we can come back to provide staff's preferred transition dates based on what our contracts are saying when they're ending. So we'll probably look at coming back in the next month or so as AMO wants to know that so that they can get their experts transitioning people as soon as they can.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White, that council accepts the staff report on Blue Box transition and directs staff to provide a report with options on preferred transition dates and interest on service options.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor? Passed.
So the next report that I have for you tonight is the Site Plan Control Agreement with Ignico Eagles Mines. You may recall that they came to council for a zoning bylaw amendment in order to allow the residential on the upper floors. This is just, did it come to council? Yes, sorry, zoning bylaw amendment, that's right. So at this point, what we're doing is we're registering or we're signing the Site Plan Control Agreement with them. And it's just basically showing what the, go to the site plan. Picture, do you have it there? Just going down. It's just giving you the site layout and where things are on the property and detailing that they need to be responsible for removing the snow as per the site plan. They need to put garbage in a certain spot. Usually what happens with Site Plan Control Agreement is we don't typically talk about them, but because council hasn't seen too many of them yet, we're trying to introduce you to the idea of how they, how they work. So if you see them in the future, you'll know what they are. So you can see that there's, you know, parking available in the back. They have lighting on their building. They just have to make sure that they're maintaining that level of standard or else we can either get our bylaw enforcement officer on them or. They're pretty straightforward. This one was an easy one because the building's already created, but you could imagine if you're doing something like FedEx, it becomes a little bit more tricky.
Any questions, comments? We don't have a resolution, do we? It's come, at the end? Director of Community Services, Bonnie Sackreider. Thank you, Ashley.
Last year, Counselor Adams had asked for a policy on crossing guards, and this is a policy that you've had for the last couple of weeks in order to give comment. Seeing that there has been no feedback, we're bringing it back tonight to council for approval. Any questions?
So Bonnie, as far as locations?
Yes.
We're leaving it up to the schools and the public to make the requests?
For future locations, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So this allows, if any members of the public are interested in a crossing guard at another location at any time, so the procedure would be that they would just kind of follow the, the steps in here, the location of the request. If they have supporting information as to why they feel it should be there, and then what we will do is we will use provincial documentation on exposure to determine whether, what the, what the exposure is based on the crossings that we currently have. And we can compare it to that and we could bring the results to council to determine if there's interest in a new location.
Well, I think the schools and the public in general have been, are not afraid to let us know.
Yes. Yeah, what has happened in the past, when the public has determined, or a school has determined they would like a new location, they've brought the request directly to council and council will speak about it. And in the past, they've, they've been approved at that point. So there wasn't really the research behind it before. So now this allows us to do what the Provincial Ontario Traffic Act is recommending for the research.
Okay. Well, it's nice to see we do have a policy in place now, which we didn't really in the past. Any further comments or questions? Counselor White, please.
Yes, this council definitely loves a good policy. So this is excellent. Can you just briefly, briefly explain what the exposure index method, you did it for us, but I don't think the public would quite understand what, what that means. We can't just say, oh, on government road I wanted. There's actually science behind it that, that proves the need for it.
Correct. So the Ontario Traffic Council in 2017 created a school crossing guard guide and is what is recommended for municipalities to use to determine where crossing guards are located as well as what crossing guards should be doing. So what they ask that you do for the exposure, I'll tell you the exact name, exposure index method. That, that's a method that's used in the transportation industry and they're recognizing that that's an appropriate method to use with crossing guards as well. What they'd like you to do is to choose a location and you're counting both number of pedestrians as well as you're counting number of vehicles. So a potential incident. And then what you do is it's charted on a graph that they supply for you. You chart the numbers and it compares that to what you currently have. And what they recommend is that if it's anything higher than the 85th percentile, that it's something that you may want to look at, whether you would like to add a crossing guard. And it always comes back to whether council feels it's appropriate or not.
Okay.
I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams, that council approves the crossing guard policy as presented effective January 28th, 2020.
All in favor? Passed. Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws?
So I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams, that bylaw 20-011 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a Site Plan Control Agreement with Ignico Eagle Mines Limited, be read a first, second and third time and enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed.
I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams, that bylaw 20-012 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 15-017 for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake, be read a first, second and third time and enacted and passed.
read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
Any comments, questions? Councilor White?
Just for a reminder for the public, which specific things did we add this time? It was the Market Street? That's it? Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Passed.
I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams, that bylaw 20-013 being a bylaw to execute a lease agreement with East Link be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
No comments, questions? All in favor? Passed. Questions from council to staff? Casey Owens? I don't have the question from the...
It's in the package. So, I submitted this question on Thursday evening. Yeah, I sent it in Thursday evening after the notice that went out for the plowing for the next day. I believe Eve's going to take the lead on the answer for this one?
Yes. So, yes, so when we did plow that evening, there were some issues with the downtown parking. There was issues with handicap parking, some sidewalks, and it was starting to get quite a bit narrow on government road, so we decided to plow that area, move the stone, so it'd be a safer place for to park and also for pedestrians. Because it was going to freeze that night, there was a lot of slush, so we thought, our foreman thought it was safe to do that so that we don't come in the next morning and everything is frozen and getting a lot of slips and falls. So, that was the main concern. There was some slush on other streets too, but because we don't have as accessibility issues on the other streets, and of course, we don't have enough equipment, enough graders to be able to process everything at the same time, so we decide we're trying to get the risk away on a class three road. So, that was the reason. So, we're having other issues with our winter maintenance program, which we want to address in the Public Works Committee meeting very shortly, as soon as we're ready. But we need to address some, we have some operator issues as far as having new operators that have been on the grader for a couple of months and on the loader for a couple of months. We need to implement some more training internally, possibly get some outside trainers to come in. We need to look at the equipment we presently have. We need to also change the way we do the normal maintenance. We're not, maybe have less snow this year, but with the different winters we're having, January has been very unpredictable. It goes from plus two, plus three, and then it freezes to minus 20, and it's just all over the map where our number of winters where what we were used to is, as you hit January, where it would freeze the whole month. You could get the odd day here and there, but now every second or third day, we seem to be getting milder weather, and whatever sand we put with salt, of course, it melts the surface, and because of the snowpack, our plows are not able to remove it because it creates ruts, and when it freezes at night, those ruts freeze, and the plow is just floating under the ruts. So, yeah, there's many issues. It's not because we've changed the eight centimeters from five. I don't think it has anything to do with it. It's just that we have to adjust for these really difficult conditions, and it's a work in progress. We've received a letter also from the school board, which I think Councilor Casey Owens wants to talk about.
Yes. So, follow-up to this, so had we, because this was done during the night from Thursday to Friday, and we did not go out at all over the weekend, there was no maintenance done whatsoever, and the streets got progressively worse. And so, we received an email from the transportation coordinator for the North Eastern District Tribe Board Bus Consortium, and a similar conversation happened with the transportation officer for the French Catholic School Board, where it was decided before it was expanded to the entire district yesterday that school buses would not be circulating within the limits of the town of Kirkland Lake because of the dispatcher that was sent out at 5:00 a.m. to do an analysis of the conditions of the road, judged that it would not be safe to have the school buses transport kids on our streets because they had deteriorated so far. Then it was expanded to the entire district for freezing rain, so there was two separate issues and a timeline. One was done at 6:00 a.m., the other one was done between, at different times, between 6:30 and 7:00 a.m. for the freezing rain. So, had we maintained, kept on top of it, or tried to keep on top of it over the weekend, would our streets have been in better shape come Monday morning?
Possibly, but I think we're facing with, as you all know, there's been the flu the last couple of weeks, and it's hit a lot of our staff, but actually in the last week it's hit, we've had three or four operators actually sick with the flu, and when you only have one or two grader operators, it makes it very difficult. And so, yeah, there's more than one issue. It's a question of availability of our staff to, we ran into that quite a bit in the last week.
So, how do we prepare for this weekend when the, if you look at the forecast, it's going back up to minus one or zero? So, how do we not go back into this cycle where we're going to end up with the same situation where people are going to get stuck all over town?
So, what we're doing now is, as of this morning, we rented another grader, and there's possibility we might rent another one tomorrow, so we'll have to be preventative, so, and try and do that, because we can only remove that sort of graders. These are plows, all they do is they float on top. They'll remove one or two inches, and that's a go-ahead, because as soon as they hit a frozen rut, they're floating on top. So, starting tomorrow morning, we will have more graders on the road.
Okay. And then last question with this one, in the policy we voted on, and it was discussed a few weeks ago, where we would give a heads-up to residents as to what area of town we'll be working on, we haven't heard nothing, like nothing's going out, and this is not being communicated with the public, and I believe it's supposed to be part of this information. And so, how are residents supposed to know, like if they choose to park on the street, and then they get a ticket overnight because there's no removal, like they're in a position where they, well, hey, we did not make it public that we were doing snow removal, so how?
On the last snow removal, did we advertise on the last one?
On Thursday, that was the last one, but I believe, like, nothing...
But you're saying on a regular basis, every day? Not even, you're talking even snowplow?
Our crews are going out every day, there's no removal, right? So, if our crews are working somewhere, we should have a notice saying, "Hey, we're doing snow removal on, I don't know, Pollock or whatever part of town," and it should be communicated.
Every morning where we're going, yes, I agree.
And that's part of the policy?
Yeah, we had started by doing that, but I guess in the last couple of days, it's lacked off.
Last couple, okay, thank you. I'm done on that one.
Councilor Adams?
Yeah, so for like recommendations for next year, like in reviewing some of the operational reviews that other municipalities have, one of the recommendations is contracting out specific snow routes to contractors. So, with what we heard about what happened here with like lack of training, lack of equipment, sick time, the list that was provided, when we provide contractors with specific routes, they're held accountable to those routes, right? Their equipment is going to be responsible. They have to maintain that equipment, and that's kind of something like if other municipalities have been told this recommendation, I know this wasn't in our report, but that's really something I wrote that I would like to go down. So, our public works department can have a specific routes that they can specialize in and not be stretched so thin that we can't hit these other areas. So, if we contract out routes, the contractors will be responsible for those routes, the damage that occurs to private property and their own equipment, which I got numbers last year on how much our equipment costs for maintaining, and it would be significant to have the route specific. So, you're just, you're responsible for this, A, B, C, and we're responsible for A, B, C, and we'll specialize in that, and you hold them to that standard. That's something that I'm really interested in, and I'm not sure how we get it back here to move forward.
You have a good point, and it's going to be a matter of maybe, they put out tenders, I believe, for equipment in May or June for the year, so maybe it could be tried to hire, do a section and have a trial and see how it works. And maybe we look at, because Swastika's so far, maybe we could try, say, okay, this year, let's try and contract out just Swastika and see how it looks and do it in that fashion, because it's quite a ways from us, and maybe we can do it more efficiently, and then concentrate more in Kirkland Lake. So, it's a good point. I think it's a point well worth looking at, for sure.
But I know it's a point worth looking at, but I would really like to have this like cemented that this will come back to us.
Oh, yeah. That's why you'll have your public works committee. That's why we formed this committee. We haven't had a public works committee meeting yet, but it will start there. That's where it would start, the discussion. Whoever the two councillors are on that committee will have those ideas too. So, they bring it to the committee, it's discussed, we look at it, bring it back to the committee, and then it brings back to council. So, that's why those committees are there, to make sure there's a follow-through on all those requests. Doesn't matter if it's planning, health, finance, that's why those committees are there. So, this way, it doesn't get, you're not going to hear about that within the next couple of weeks, but once we get that committee, and then we start gearing up, we work on a 10-year capital plan, that's brought up to the committee first. We want them, we want to hear some feedback from a couple councillors of what they think of it, and they may have questions of things that we haven't taught them, right? So, we'll get prepared for that, then we bring it to council, and then we move from there.
Yeah, Eve, just to kind of update you on the previous council, we did contract out, I think from January on till the rest of winter, Swastika. As far as the quality of the work, there was nothing but compliments from the residents out there. Unfortunately, the report, whether it was economically feasible to do it, never got back to council, so the ball got dropped, but I agree with Councilor Adams. I do think it'll work and make life easier for our works department, because it's getting to be a real struggle, especially with lack of equipment or the right type of equipment, so we do have to do something definitely in that respect, I believe. Councilor Owen?
So, obviously, we've contracted out before, so there's no problem with the union. My next question is if we contract out, could that have the benefit of reducing the amount of overtime we're paying?
Yes, it could.
And thus reduce the cost to the residents without affecting layoffs to our staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eve. Notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams, that bylaw 20-014 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held January 28, 2020, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Counselors' reports? Councilor White?
So, this month, I don't know if anybody has attended, but at the museum, there is an amazing tattoo exhibit. Not that I'm a tattoo person, clearly, but it is really, it can connect with you really emotionally. There's a lot of stories that are behind these individuals' tattoos. The original exhibit came from Wellington, and then local people added their tattoos and their stories. The photos were taken by a local photographer, Penny Frenell, and it's really, really worth taking a trip out to the museum until March 28 to see those pictures. They're not as graphic as one would think. Thanks.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind people that tomorrow is Bell's Let's Talk Day. That is an event that Bell has started to reduce the stigma attached to mental health, and again, it's another sort of emotional subject for me, as mental health issues and addiction are often tied together. So, I just wanted to remind people that, you know, go on, take a look, see what's reading. You know, it's strange, sometimes people with mental health feel very isolated, and that's sort of an internal thing from themselves, and just saying hello to somebody that you know maybe suffers from depression or some other, or anxiety or whatever, can really make a difference in that person's day, and I'd just like to encourage people to take part in Bell Let's Talk, and thank you.
Councilor Adams?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the staff at the Aquatic Centre for opening up Saturdays from 12:00 to 1:00 to allow families to enter the leisure pool. That's great for families to be able to allow and have more family time in the pool, so thank you very much for that addition.
Thank you. I have a rather long-winded report, so bear with me on this. I'm sorry, Rick, I'm going to outdo you on this one. I received a request to attend a strategy meeting in Timmins on behalf of the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, so I took some notes. There was seven mostly mayors from the Northern District, some of the forest operators, Georgia Pacific, ECOM, and I believe there was one other one. On January 15, I attended the Ontario Forest Sector Strategy Session in Timmins, in which was facilitated by the Deputy Minister of MNR and Forestry. As mentioned, Northern Ontario was represented by the Northern municipalities and some of these companies. The MNR and forestry strategy is to have a 10-year horizon promoting collaboration in managing forest operations in Ontario. Some of the highlights that were brought out in that strategy session, well, the strategy session was really communicated to us because it already had been done. They were looking for input from the local municipalities. Communities in Northern Ontario are five times more dependent on forest resources and services than our counterparts in Southern Ontario region. Despite this, Northern Ontario was not represented in preparation of the draft strategy. All strategy meetings were held in Southern Ontario, which was disappointing to say the least, and we made note of that to the facilitator. As it stands, in last year's production, only 50% of the quota assigned of sustainable wood supply for the forest companies is being harvested annually. No newcomers have come into the industry or have been granted wood supply for several years. Over the past 10 years, many sawmills, logging companies, newsprint producers have created, have ceased operations in Northern Ontario. This also has resulted in the sell-off of eight power dams in Western Ontario in recent years. When we look at innovation in the wood industry, Ontario is about 15 years behind B.C. and Quebec in developing mass wood products and production innovation of wood byproducts. In reviewing these results, six of the municipalities supported communication to the minister to implement an enhanced sustainable forestry license that would allow for more input from our municipalities and other stakeholders. Tomogami is presently going through a similar type application. There are two forest management alliances, one out of Tomiscoming and one out of Abitibi covering Timmins and Northwest, as it stands. The Northern municipalities as stakeholders should be involved to help guide the revitalization for the full utilization of our sustainable forest resources along with a... for the full utilization of our, of our sustainable forest resources, along with adapting and advancing emerging forest product trends. What is happening now is the majority of the forest is being harvested, is being shipped to the U.S. and Quebec, and in many cases to produce new innovative forest products while we sit on the sidelines. Uh, what we wanted to see was a more transparent relationship between the Forest Alliance Group and the municipalities, and identify economic opportunities, uh, for, uh, wood byproducts. I don't know what the end result will be out of this, because, uh, these forestry alliances seem to be getting, have full control. The MNR, uh, it's the typical government, uh, situation, we see federally and provincially, where they're, they're just pushing stuff down, uh, taking it out of their hands so they don't have to deal with it. Uh, I think if anything that comes out of this and, and why, uh, they asked for our support, uh, was to bring to the attention, uh, of the ministry that, uh, the Northern, uh, forestry producers or municipalities have been, uh, lost in the shuffle, and not that we're gonna be able to tell them how to do their business, but, uh, at least be, uh, involved in some of the, uh, the advice, uh, aspect of it. Uh, we do have a couple of members in Kirkland Lake that are on the Tamiskaming Forest Alliance, uh, and I did talk with them and what their thoughts were, uh, put it this way, uh, we need more support, uh, from the municipalities to, uh, in, to have the ministry, uh, involve the municipalities', uh, views and, uh, input, so that was the purpose of sending that, uh, communication that I think Joanne sent out to you today. Uh, it, it was a very interesting meeting, uh, the producers, uh, they, it's, it's kind of a closed shop, I must admit, but I think they are, uh, they got the message. Constable Casey?
What communication?
I'm sorry?
What communication was sent out today?
I can't hear you.
What communication was sent out today from Joanne? Joanne's not...
The incentive? Well, uh...
No, no.
No.
Sorry, you said something was sent out by Joanne today? I didn't receive anything from Joanne today?
Uh, she sent out a copy of the, said all councillors, to the, uh, the, the letter that the, uh, the six, uh, communities, uh, had all signed off on. This was, uh, done right after the meeting in, in Timmins, uh, and was basically asking, asking them to, uh, I don't think they're gonna come up with a totally new plan, because they've left Northern Ontario out of the, out of the picture, uh, in the strategy, but, uh, I think if anything, the message that we got across was, we wanna be involved, we want to, uh, have some say, these are, uh, crown lands that are being cut, so they're not in, in our municipality, but they're in our backyard, and they're vehicles, trucks, logging trucks, running up and down the highway through our towns, and, uh, we just wanted to have some more say, at least have some transparency in what's going on. Uh, in my five and a half years on council, uh, I had yet to hear anything from, uh, the Tamiskaming Alliance. I did, after that meeting, I did hear from them, because I think we got their attention, and I did get a call from the MNR, uh, the local rep, and, uh, he agreed with me, and he's on that committee, so. It, it's more, uh, a communication and working in partnership with, with, uh, the municipalities. What we hope in the long run would be that there'd be more opportunities to expand, uh, and innovative wood products that could be produced here in, uh, in the north. Uh, we look at what's happening in Toronto, now they're, and, and B.C., they're building, uh, high-rise condominiums with, uh, mass timber as opposed to steel, so there has been a, a, a big movement, uh, in using wood products now than there ever has been, but not so much in Ontario. Go ahead.
So does that mean, like, we're joining, you, you want us to Kirkland Lake to join, like, an alliance, a, a new alliance of some sort?
We were just supporting the Abitibi Alliance, but, uh, the, uh, one of the members from the alliance in Tamiskaming did call me or email me, and, uh, we, we chatted after, and I said, a lot of this is just communication, let us, and let us know what's going on, and being a little more involved in, uh, the advisory capacity. We wouldn't have any voting rights, it would be an invitation to, uh, attend, basically. I, I don't see us starting our own alliance, no.
Okay.
Although, uh, Timmins beyond, that's what they wanna do, and, and so does Tamogami.
Okay. So do we need a resolution? Are you asking us to write up an, a resolution in support of this?
I, that, uh, email that Joanne sent today copied, uh, the letter, it was just a letter sent to the Minister of, uh, Natural Resources. It was sent out today, I got a copy of it.
So when you say we've, like, we've, the town of Kirkland has, has signed on to this already?
All we were doing was supporting...
A document we haven't received, because none of us have gotten that out.
We haven't committed into anything other than sup, supporting the Abitibi to open up, uh, more discussion and, uh, the ability to, uh, to talk to these people and give us advice as to what they're doing. That, that was the conversation I had, again, with, uh, Tamiskaming and with the MNR here, so we're not, uh, we're not starting our own alliance or anything like that. We haven't signed on to anything. We're just asking for more transparency, uh, more involvement, uh, from an advice, advisory standpoint. Just not another committee or anything like, like that.
Can we ask Megan, is it possible to get a copy of the, because we haven't, I haven't gotten the copy? We haven't gotten a copy of it, so we have no clue what...
I did not get this email either.
Okay, so...
Joanne sent, I saw it this morning. I got, maybe she didn't send it?
Yeah, got nothing. So, but yeah, so I, I think, so...
I'll definitely look in for, I'll look into that correspondence and send it out.
I'll send it out the morning.
Okay.
There was nothing, uh, putting us at risk or, uh, what I would say controversial, I was just in support of what, uh, looking for more communication and, uh, that aspect of it, that was it. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just tell, or, your worship, just tell me you didn't commit any money, okay? Tell me you didn't commit any money and I'll go away happy.
There was no financial commitment whatsoever. I, I don't know how effective it's going to be, in all honesty, uh, I have my doubts. Uh, these alliances are big corporations, most of them are U.S.-based, uh, we do have some local, uh, forestry commitment here, but there was no commitment.
Thank you. Or? What's that?
So I have a motion moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams, adjournment to an in-camera meeting pursuant to section two thirty-nine, bracket two, of the municipal act to discuss two proposed land disposition items and one personal matter about an identifiable individual.
All in favor? Thank you, passed.